Alright, so, uh, thank you all. Thank you all, and that's all that we, it rains during the meeting, but clears up by the time we leave, so.
Yeah.
It's my wish. Alright, so let's do the roll, please.
President Cook.
I'm here.
Vice President Downs.
Here.
Treasurer Fritz.
Here.
Secretary Thomas.
Here.
Trustee Gayton. Trustee Zimmerman. And Trustee Everard.
Here.
Alright, do we have any, uh, public, uh, comments, please?
There's nothing online.
Well, I don't have an opportunity.
There's one guest, but I don't know if they're gonna speak. I don't see him yet, though. Pat?
No, thank you.
Alright, thanks, Pat.
Um, alright, so, uh, we'll go to five point one, uh, Building Open Space Preserves for Long-Term Ecological Resiliency. Scientific Parameters for Land Protection Planning, Part Two. So, Ed, I think you're on.
Thanks, and, uh, it, it's, uh, it's nice being able to present the second part of this. Because, as the board knows, we, it's a complex topic, so we broke it up into smaller presentations rather than taking a couple of hours to do it on a Saturday. That time, we talked about, uh, where the district had been in terms of land protection over about the past decade and a half or so. Um, this evening's a little bit short presentation, but it is designed to help understand the foundations or the underpinnings of how the land protection plan is put together. And so, um, are you, should I tell you which advance?
Tell me, look out.
Okay, so, uh, let's go to the first slide. And, uh, so, um, one of the important things to understand about, uh, how science underpins our land protection efforts is to really understand how land protection efforts were underpinned in the past. And so there is a first generation of preserve design parameters that really guided not only the district's land protection efforts, but really the public agencies involved in conservation for a long time. And that was in place after the district had formed and really kind of governed where we went with land protection in the first couple of decades of, of the district's existence. And so, some of those, or some of the parameters that drove that concept of where you should preserve land are kind of the following. Um, those efforts really drew on what were widely held conservation beliefs at the time about the nature of, uh, of nature to be able to sustain itself without imports from human beings. So it worked on an assumption that once you preserved a piece of land and the human impacts on it were removed, whether that's mining or agriculture, tree harvest or whatever, the nature would revert to its original state and kind of return to where it was before those impacts happened. Um, so what drove those protective efforts were really set aside a piece of land, put a fence around it, and kind of call it done. The job was done. Um, those kind of design parameters back in those days really couldn't envision the future impacts that will become major drivers behind how we design preserves today. Um, climate change was not a consideration. There was no such thing as genetically modified plants or animals. Um, habitat fragmentation wasn't really understood. So it was a very simple kind of process in the first couple of decades of the district's existence. And we really lacked in understanding for how these ecological systems had functioned originally. That knowledge just wasn't out there yet. Uh, and we didn't have the benefit of research that was gonna occur over the next four or five decades. Next slide. So how have things changed? Things really began to change in the late nineteen sixties and early nineteen seventies. And it began with the study of island archipelagos by Robert McGarther and E.O. Wilson. E.O. Wilson became very famous later on for writing a lot of books about ecology. But back in the sixties, they began to study why islands, groups of islands on the mainland, had less diverse species on the furthest island, more diverse species closer to the mainland. And they're trying to figure out why that species richness declined as you got away from the mainland. Um, the concept was eventually applied to continental natural communities, not to islands. Uh, and we'll see why in the late nineteen eighties and the early nineteen ninety. Um, those early uses of that concept of island biogeography helped design systems of preserves to save big animals like the Florida panther and the red wolf and globally like the Indian elk. So the district began to use the same kind of approach to its own land protection efforts in the late nineteen ninety. Um, they kind of dovetailed with a lot of research coming to the fore about McHenry County's original natural communities and what was left. So the McHenry County Natural Areas Inventory was completed in the late nineteen nineties and the McHenry County aided study, which looked at where the best remaining wetlands were. And they dovetailed with really the gelling of this knowledge about how ecological systems function and what happened when they were fragmented. Uh, and so by the time we got to the two thousand and one and two thousand and seven bond referendums, this knowledge had really been integrated into how the district looked at what land should be protected in the future. So this is just a neat picture of the Florida panther, which is a subspecies of, of the North American cougar that requires large home ranges. And island biogeography and the information that came out of it really drove building a system of preserves across Florida to allow this species to be able to move from place to place to place. And at the time it was instituted, there were only about a dozen Florida panthers known. And today, this species has been kind of rescued from extinction, mostly because of that preserve system design. So how did it work? This is what McGarther and Wilson studied. They said, you know, if you have a bunch of islands off the mainland, by the, by the time you, when you get to Island A, there's almost as many different kinds of animals and plants on there as on the mainland. And when you get to B, there's less, and when you get to C, there's even less. And what they discovered was that's the process of a couple of things that happen. There's less migration in and out as you get further away from the source of those species. The other thing that happened, and it's kind of an interesting word, is if you're on Island C and you're a species of animal, you're more subject to what's called events of random, uh, demographic stochasticity. And what it really means is stuff happened. Okay, so if you're on Island C and there's a big tornado, your entire species might get wiped out, or you might get knocked down such a low population that you can't come back up from it. And so this makes a lot of sense when you look at islands, because we know they're surrounded by water and it takes a lot for the animals and plants to get back and forth. Next. But what happened in the years after island biogeography became a well-established parameter in ecology is we began to look at the terrestrial landscape on the continents in a little bit different fashion. And what we realized is natural areas aren't on, on continental landscape. Especially in developed parts of the country are really islands in and of their self. And this really sort of illustrates, uh, I think, the, the concept pretty well. So those are three patches of oak woodland. And they're not septic, they're not separated by water, but they're separated by pasture. Now, because these are close together, there's probably less of that island biogeographic effect. But as these islands get further and further apart of habitat, that may as well be water for some of the species that have to move between those patches. They just can't survive in the environments between them. And this process is known as habitat fragmentation. And that has occurred in the upper Midwest across large spots of the landscape. Next. So we have an example closer to home. Uh, the Conservation District completed the oak study in two thousand and five. And on your left, the all green picture is the distribution of oak woodlands in McHenry County at the time of settlement. So there is about a hundred and forty-three thousand acres. And if you were a squirrel down near Merangle, you could probably get all the way up to the state line and never leave the woodland. Um, today, if we take a look at the picture on the right, the brown splotches within the green are where those same oak woodlands occur today. So where we once had a hundred and forty-three thousand acres of woods that was more or less continuous, we now have about seventeen thousand acres countywide, and it's really split up into small islands. Next. So when you design preserves based on island biogeography and the need of species, um, what, what does that preserve design look like? So these are some, some of the general tenants that we build the district's land protection plan on. And I should add, these kinds of plans are really done globally, they're done nationally, they're done regionally, and they're done for local agencies at, at the size of ours. So they're pretty simple to understand. Uh, larger preserves are better than smaller preserves. They'll hold more kinds of plants and animals longer. And in our particular part of the world, a large preserve is between two and five thousand acres. If you were to go out to, say, Montana, to the Yellowstone area, that same set of large preserves would be fifty thousand or a hundred thousand acres. But we're not managing for elk and timberwolves here, so our large preserves, our macro sites, can be smaller. A series of connected preserves retains the genetic diversity and the ecological stability longer than preserves that are fragmented or split apart. If you can't tie preserves together, but you can cluster them close to one another, you get a similar but lesser set of benefits and ecological advantages. If those large blocks of habitat are of the same type, so you have large prairies or large woodlands, um, you'll sustain the plants and animals that depend on them longer than if they're little pieces broken up by all kinds of edge habitats. Um, if you start out with a preserve that has some really good natural areas clustered within it, then it will recover more rapidly than if you have to start from scratch. So the easy, um, metaphor to keep in your head is a chocolate chip cookie. If you preserve a block of land and the really good stuff are all the chocolate chips within that cookie, it's better than if you start with a cookie that has only one or two chocolate chips in it. So those chocolate chips represent the areas of diversity, and as you manage the site, they can move out from those epicenters across the whole site. And another really important one, and you'll see it very typically in our preserve system, is if you concentrate on river systems, you capture not only the terrestrial component of diversity, but you get the aquatic component as well. So when you look at a map of district sites, you see they're often clustered along stream systems like Nipper Sink or Kishawaki or Piscus R or the Five. Next. This is kind of how you can simplify the system to really get a, a handle on how it functions. There are really three kinds of components to it. And this sort of illustrates it pretty well. There are cores or big preserves. There are connections between them, and along the way, there are nodes or smaller areas of conservation land that kind of act as transfer stations along the way. So if you think of this as a, a modern subway system or a bus system, the destinations are those big core preserves, and the, the stations along the way are the nodes. And the actual system itself that moves, moves people or goods or whatever around on it are the corridors. Next. So we have three components, and that's what you'll find our system has been based on for many years, and systems across the region. So the core preserves are those big preserves I talked about. Sometimes in our plan, they're referred to as macro sites. So when you look at a district land protection plan, you'll see that word come up. The nodes, we simply refer to as our conservation area, and corridors, we refer to as linkages. So those three components make up the preserve system. Next. So let's look a little bit at each one in detail. So the core preserves are the bigger blocks of land that can support the largest number of plants and animal species. So they form the main building block. As I said, they're usually between two and five thousand acres in size. And they connect, run the natural communities or populations of animals. Um, and they usually occur within a matrix of good land and land that's been really beat up over the years. So it's a mixture of types of habitats. And they're, they're capable, because of their size, of sustaining plants and animals that require a large home range. And I'll talk a little bit about that in the next slide. But there are some species of animals that were native to McHenry County that just can't survive on a small preserve. Their habitat needs, uh, require larger acreage. Um, it also allows species that are sensitive to isolation. And typically, that's, um, breeding problems or genetic problems when one population gets islanded and it can't interact with other members of the species from different populations. So believe it or not, there are some, some pretty common animals in McHenry County that suffer from this problem. Lanning's turtle is one of them. And so we find clusters of Lanning's turtle, but there's no way they're gonna get from site to site to site because of all that land in between that's changed in terms of what's on it. Um, it's also important to have these core preserves for some species that just need a, a big block of the same kind of habitat. And those in particular are grassland birds. We'll talk about those in a minute. Next. So we actually have seven macro sites. Um, and these are sites that form those big cores that the rest of our system is, is based off of. And you'll see often a hyphen in between them, because we have sites that are tied together and they form one macro site. So Glacial Park in the north branch, the Kean Prairie area, um, Alden Sedimental in Lightning Creek, Rush Creek, Brookdale, and in between, there's a private block of preserved land called Halo Hills, which ties that whole system together. The Kishawaki Corridor, which was preoccupied by Merangle, Pleasant Valley. And then in the southeast part of the county, some of our early purchases at Silver Creek, Hickory, Gold, Falcon, Lions form that southeast macro site. Next. These are some of the species that, if you had looked at our system in nineteen ninety as it stood before we began to plan for preserves using this method, we would have found none of that in the county, and they all were originally native here. Today, they've all returned. So the animal on the left is marsh fox, required about a hundred and fifty acres of native prairie to nest. Um, ospreys, which require large areas of restored wetlands and clean streams, which are nesting in Glacial Park, uh, even as we speak. Um, badgers, which were fairly uncommon or absent for most of McHenry County and are routinely found as road kills because they have become more common. Uh, bald eagles, we've had fox about those returning to the colony. Uh, bobcats. And we have evidence for both bobcats and river otters on trail cams in our sites now. So the reason these species have come back is because we built a preserve system that can support them over the long haul. Next. Um, there's also an interesting phenomenon that occurs when you have blocks of land, um, but they're made up of all kinds of different sorts of habitats that are whatever has come back after that area was preserved. So it could be some unassociated trees that came up, some old pasture that overgrows. Um, they're just a mismatch of things. And what occurs there is you have what's called an edge effect. And so lots of species developed with these big blocks of prairies in an evolutionary sense, or big blocks of woodland in an evolutionary sense. And they're very sensitive to what happens when those areas get smaller and smaller. They get what are called effects from the edges around them. And the two most important are parasitism and predation. So let's use grassland birds for an example. They may nest in what looks like a nice big grassland, but it's surrounded by wooded edges, or perhaps a wooded edge goes through the middle of it. The nests that occur in those grasslands usually are not successful for two reasons. Either the predators, like raptor skunks, use those wooded edges to scout for bird nests, and then they eat the eggs or the young. The brown-headed cowbird searches for those nests vigorously and then flies down when the, when the mother is gone from incubating and lays its own eggs in the nest. Those hatch out earlier, and that grassland bird winds up raising brown-headed cowbirds, and its own young die or starve to death. So this is a bird that evolved with bison. So it followed the bison herds around, never made its own nest, it just kind of preloaded on whoever had a nest around. When you have small blocks of habitats surrounded by edge, this is what occurs to things like grassland birds. But that's why you see a stride to create the bigger blocks of habitat. Next. Um, how does this occur close to home? This is a real life example. Um, here are all the blocks of oak woodlands that were left that we discovered in the two thousand and five oak study. Um, two thousand eight hundred and eighty-eight separate groves of trees. But when you look at, um, the minimum size being a hundred acres of continuous woodland for many of these species, there are only eight in the entire county. And, uh, that's on the right-hand picture. Fortunately, um, three of those are district site. Porah Woods, Rush Creek, and Glacial Park. So the different has been, done a good job of protecting those bigger woodlands. Next. So these are some of the species that are most sensitive to those edge effects. Uh, and they're species we see commonly, like the bobbling or the eastern metal lar. But in that, that edge situation, they don't have successful nests. Um, also the smooth green snake, which, uh, was not very common on district sites until we began to expand the larger blocks of habitat. Next. Um, nodes are those second piece of that, that preserve design that I talked about. And these are really the transfer stations that plants and animals move up to. They wait for a while, and then they move on to the next core preserve. Uh, and we've done a really good job of making sure that our large core preserves are connected with lots of nodes along the way. Next. And finally, the last piece of that puzzle is linkages or corridors. And again, these are obviously the things that connect those sites, and they allow the gene flow to go back and forth. Now, the good news is that some of the commonest corridors that we use to, to link these sites, like old railroad right-of-ways or recreational trails or river systems, typically serve an important recreational purpose as well. So, next slide. Here are four very common types of, well, three very common types of, uh, linkages. One is, uh, an example of our prairie trail, which provides lots of recreational use, but also provides a way for plants and animals to use, to move. Nipper Sink Creek, which is full every weekend with kayakers, but also is a riparian system that connects four or five sites. Um, we have worked with Commonwealth Edison over the past few decades to actually plant prairie along their power line easements. And so those easements across the landscape of power lines become ways for plants and animals to move. And this is a really interesting one. Um, this is a picture of an actual design that was built in Montana. And it's designed to move wildlife from one side of the road to the other. And this wasn't something that occurred very often in the Midwest. But, um, just this week, we actually got announcement of the first ramps being released by the federal government to provide these kinds of crossings in rural areas in the Midwest. To cut down on, uh, animal vehicle collisions and to provide bridges for wildlife. So even roadways, when they're managed right and they have crossings either under or over, can provide those kinds of corridors. Next. So we'll close with some kind of important takeaways related to preserve design. Just like last week, we closed with some, um, talking about some misconceptions about district land protection plans. Um, here are some takeaways about how we design our preserve. Next. Um, our land production or land protection efforts are based on a really systematic approach that's grounded in the most current science that we know about how preserve plants and animals long term. Um, our approach mirrors stuff that's done at the United Nations, at the federal level, in hundreds of countries across the planet that have conservation plans, and regionally in Illinois and in the six county region in Chicago. So it is really the approach conservation uses across the board now to try and preserve diversity. Um, we update it and refine it as new research is completed, whether that's global research or national research or our own research, like we did with the oaks. And, uh, it identifies strategic areas that can complete specific preserve design components in that larger plan. So we target those, those parcels that we can protect that will help complete that larger plan. Next. Um, the district preserve design always includes land that can be restored to natural habitat. So we know that there isn't enough remaining natural land to be able to build these big preserves. And I will just call your attention to the last bullet point. Uh, if we look to rebuild preserves that support the plants and animals that were part of the original black soil prairies of McHenry County, um, there is no way to do it unless we buy land that is gonna be restored back into prairie. Uh, Illinois is called the prairie state. We have about twenty million acres of it at one time. Less than one one-hundredth of one percent of that original prairie has survived. So if we're gonna build a system to support those plants and animals, it's going to require restoration. And that's why you'll often see when the district picks up a piece of land, it's not just a good natural area. It also has other types of land that come with it. Next. Um, this, this bears repeating. Uh, we talked about it last week, but, um, one of the arguments you often hear is why do we protect more open space until we have all the resources that we need to prepare for our existing holdings? And I won't, I won't repeat all of those, um, points that we talked about last week. But in terms of building a preserve that has large cores, nodes, and connections between it, there's a limited timeframe to do that. Uh, we live in a suburban county that is going to continue to grow, uh, over the next couple of decades. And because of how these preserves are designed, losing key components can mean a disconnected preserve system, or it can cause us to lose opportunities that might otherwise allow us to complete the system. But we have a limited amount of time to really put this system together. And I think the district's done a very good job of doing it. Um, but it's important to understand, those types of opportunities don't last forever. And so when, when the parcel comes up, it's important to protect for the reasons of preserve design we, we bring it to you there to determine if we can act upon. Next. And I think this is also important to understand. If we have well-designed preserves, um, we replace the tax benefits that are lost when those, those parcels are picked up by the district. We replace them with ecosystem service benefits. So there's a loss of one type of benefit and a gain of another type of benefit. And that's important to understand. The district's a, a big taxpayer in McHenry County through our farm lease program, and the figures are up there from last week. Um, but it's also important to understand that it isn't a, a loss, it's a replacement. Those ecosystem services, which are groundwater recharge, flood control, outdoor recreation opportunities, air and water quality improvements, biodiversity improvements, they accrue indefinitely. So as that land becomes healthier, as that preserve design system comes into its own, as we add pieces, those types of benefits continue to improve indefinitely into the future. Next. So we'll close. Last week, this was a question that, um, is often asked, and it's fair to try to answer it, how much land is enough? And, uh, last, last presentation, I said enough land in a healthy enough condition that allows the largest percentage of the county's natural heritage to survive and flourish into the foreseeable future, and that's still true. But I would add the next statement as well. It's also enough land in a healthy enough condition and it allows for the creation of an interconnected system of preserves that facilitates the regular movement of plants and animals, promotes genetic diversity, and creates resiliency to climate change. So that kind of gives you the foundation for how we've designed the preserves over the past, uh, really five decades and how it's grown from a very simple approach to a very complex science-based approach. And if there are any questions, they'll be happy to try to answer them. One of your slides, about six or so boxes, something like thirteen percent of the pre-European trees remain. You mean individual trees of that age? Yeah. So these pictures that you see are of mature oak stand. So they will have trees that are anywhere from, you know, ten years old to four hundred years old. Um, and these are the ones that are left, and we were able to map these using GIS. And there's kind of a complicated system of layers we used. It started with maps from eighteen thirty-seven, moved to maps eighteen seventy-two, and then to air photos in nineteen thirty-nine, two thousand and five and two thousand and fifteen, or, uh, two thousand, well, the good news is each layer supported the next layer. So we knew we were not guessing that, that each layer was supporting the next. Um, this mapping that was first done in McHenry County, by the way, um, later went on to be replicated across eighteen counties in where they all lie. So we have a snapshot for the whole north part of the state, and the results are similar in every county.
We have seven core preserves. I mean, is that sufficient or in your long-term planning, are there places in the county where you would envision if, if circumstances allow, additional core preserves?
I think the answer is pretty much, it's done.
Okay.
There, there are some, there are some geologic features in extreme northwestern McHenry County that we don't have representation on, but they can be, that representation can happen without a core preserve. So these building blocks are in place. And uh and they've taken a long time to to put together. The first acquisitions in Glacial were in nineteen seventy five. So it's been a very slow accumulation over time, but I think these are the ones you'll see on the landscape.
Right. And I think that, I mean, I think that's important for um, you know, the public to understand and perhaps for people who are uh not suspicious of the district, but they wonder, well, what's their objective? And if you can let it out that um we have the foundation and we're working to enhance it with the connections and with selective additions. I think that's uh it's a very good message and it's one that I think is e- easy to digest and doesn't frighten people who um, you know, might have a slightly different orientation.
I have a question. I don't want to be like a smart aleck, but do you think the average taxpayer, you know, they think about, you know, like how many turtles or how many this skunk cabbage or how many, you know, animals there are that aren't there? Or do they envision more like, I want I want to go down the Nipper Saint Creek or I want to take a hike around this park or, you know, I want to go camping or.
I I think that that is this excellent question, Pat. And and the good news is if it were an either or situation, that would be a pretty tough one. But the beauty of this kind of system is that it integrates public recreation in it very nicely. So we do have some areas that contain sensitive species and they're open occasionally for educational program. But most of our system accommodates human use. And so what we, I think we try to do with this and build a system within the larger human system of transportation and stores and schools and farmland and all that type of thing. So I think most people don't think twice about that. But there is a cadre of people in the county that are really concerned about it. And as the district's educational programs have um expanded over the years, I think there's more and more people who think about it. I also think it's split along lines of where you may reside in the county. If you're in a very crowded section of the county, perhaps you notice these things more. If you're in an area that has a lot of open space, maybe I don't notice them as much. So I think it's a mixed bag, but the good news is we can do all this and accommodate both the person who wants to camp and wants to bike and wants to hike and the species that are dependent on this, these types of lands to survive.
I would say to piggyback on that, it's because of the design, having the buffers and to have enough, we noted during COVID during the pandemic where everybody mass numbers went out to to use our sites and having enough areas protected so the human species can, you know, coexist with the plant and animal species is absolutely critical. And then the other piece I think the tech team on is in the outdoors and knowing birding being the number one recreational activity. The level of experience of enhancement increases when there's a wildlife sighting. You know, so that's why there's such a draw to go out. And so having those abilities to spot, to see the birds, to see the different animal species, not to impact them, um adds to that experience.
And they, the Chicago Birding Community, I want to figure I saw a couple of years ago spends three hundred and fifty-six million dollars a year in the Chicago region looking for birds. And when we have a rare species come down in one of our sites, you don't have to advertise it. It's on the Audubon list within hours and then their cars backed up along the roads with people adding it to their life. But I think that brings up a good point. I I ran into the first time um this weekend back uh with two guys at at a golf course. So I had one of my, one of the our shirts on it. And the guy goes, the district has way too much land. That's land that's not paying tax, which I'm glad to see that that you're coming to eight hundred and some thousand the last five or six years, a hundred and twenty-five thousand, whatever it is a year. Um, but you know, their point, and I think they're, you know, they're educated, smart people and get their their down on it. So I think you bring up a point, it's something that we've got to be ready to to respond to. You know, somehow get out there and and then one one other comment, just me, but the public where I'm at, it's like every acre is like an experiment. You know, like you got to study it, you know, everything. And maybe that's why we got, we need, you know, and it's just going to grow. I mean, that's, you know what I mean? It's and I, a farmer questioned me about the over in Boone County that, that you're gonna um you know, you got to, uh, where is that? I'm off of twenty. You know, we got to convert that that farmland uh prairie land. And hey, what's going on, you know, and and I I'm not being devil's advocate, but I'm just telling you what I hear and I'm, parks are beautiful, but it's just I I don't, it's a tough nut to crack. It seems to me that, you know, people don't understand or maybe they don't care about all the, you know, the little things that nobody else really sees. You know, to the, uh, you know what I mean? The to the average Joe, you know, I want to go out there and play with my kids or I want to do this and you know, I see the birds in my bird feeder at my house, but
I I think one of the lessons that that I see from listening to your presentations is like the return of some of the animals, you know, the um the badger. Does he have a a distinctive track, like a raccoon's track or, you know, when you see it?
It's it's the holes.
It's the holes.
Yeah, um, they tend to be more oval shape. And uh if you're on a badger dig area.
It's interesting. We have a lot of those on our property up in up north. We have three hundred and sixty acres that we, you know, try to preserve as much as we can, but I see some of that. And I think, you know, I if you could get like, what you doing with um, you know, uh, Ike with Mike or the chairman, you know, and that's in June or whenever that is, but I think more public awareness, you know, and you know, hey, look, we've got badgers coming in and, you know, the offspring, you know, I think the public awareness is probably your gonna be your best helping educate. I mean, it that's just my eye the most is when when you see what the good that's coming out of what your your efforts have been. Because I don't think everybody knows it. I mean, the golf course comment, those are the comments I always. Interesting, but I thanks.
Yeah, I think it was a very good presentation and and you know, there are, uh, as I'm getting older, I'm less capable of getting off the trail. And um I heard out earlier, um, but ways uh using, you know, video cameras like game cameras or whatever they might be to capture uh some of these uh highlights and then uh have that available, whether it's on YouTube or if there's a site that the district views there, you know, then you you can appeal to um uh shut-ins or schoolchildren or whoever. Uh, they don't have to be, um, you know, uh, twenty-three healthy uh people who can take off from work and and you know, find uh find an opportunity to interact. So, I mean, I think uh it's a wonderful resource, uh. And I think we're fortunate to build them for people who have gone before who made commitments to the district. I think there will always be tensions. How much is enough and like, you're not gonna uh satisfy all the people all the time. Uh, and I certainly think that this is a this is what we're about. We're the conservation district. If we're not interested in doing this, no one else is going to do it. And and so I think I I give the staff credit uh for for their efforts and for trying to educate us. And sometimes repetition is the key. All right.
Very good. Kind of the opposite of what we're hearing in terms of not only preserving land, but you know, converting it back the way it was. I was reading in Ireland, sixteen hundred was covered with trees and less than ten percent. And those trees have been gone for hundreds of years. The the British makes sailing ships on it. Their trees are gone and they they don't replant them. And I just, I just, I'm baffled by that. The pretty island would be prettier with more trees.
And one other question, any marijuana today or going going out into that natural habitat on four two oh?
Defer that question.
It isn't today, right? That's whenever we smokes on the uh the open land. Four two oh is a a old police call about marijuana.
It was in before legalization, that was the day to celebrate.
Right.
Yeah, I thought it was a federal bill. It was four twenty. I didn't, my wife actually did. We're into four twenty.
I'm told it was an old police.
Is that?
I have no idea.
What did I ask you about marijuana? I asked about the police call.
Yeah, I don't know.
There there is a bit of history. Um, if I have a. Four twenty comes from a time of day in typically the end of the last class this fall in college. And when uh when cafeteria opens, well, what are we going to do?
You know all the. For next year's presentation.
My my wife and I were in Denver one night, the dog lives up and we were out downtown and it was, it happened to be that day and it was before legalization and people in the parks and everywhere, they were making statements. It was legal, I showed them after, but they have that to lock it. Yes. So the heavy Falcon.
Yeah.
And when I like a minute and a half or so.
All right, moving right along.
We're here to help.
I may have to break out the gavel. Under new business, we have the uh Clean Hand Area Conservation Area Snowmobile Trail Alignment. And um I think Elizabeth's gonna speak to this and and uh bring us up to speed.
Absolutely. Well, terrific. Well, I I appreciate um the opportunity. I want to give my thanks to the patients of the Snowmobile Association with the crest request. Um, I know George Thompson is out in the audience, which is great and glad to have you here. Um, and to allow the staff to take the problem that we had and to try to find a solution. And if you were the problem in generally and everybody starts to work, you can try to find a pathway that seems acceptable. And so what we have in front of this evening to the board is the work that's been done by all of our teams, both from our natural resources side to our planning and development department to identify um and our hunting committee to find a way that would first and foremost, as we talked about conservation and protection of species, that is our statute, that's our authority to protect. And so we do have an eagle's nest that's been nesting on the site for two years. So we have a responsibility to protect that uh with anything that's done. Um, we have an importance of looking at the hydrology, natural areas there and how we align a pathway. So it's one that is feasible with other activities. We have an existing use uh with our waterfowl hunting program, um, which then helps to uh add to another constituent base that we have. And then we had a request um from the Snowmobile Association to find a linkage for a safety perspective, one that only just enhances our experience, but to address they had safety concerns along Clean Hand Road to get off there during a snowfall and to to make that connection. So um what has been done through the review is an alignment has been planned here. Um, and so this was in your board packet. And Amy, you would do a better job of identifying where this is, but it avoids to a greater extent than already on the road on the Eagle's Nest. And we did do some research. It was presented at the very onset of what the U S Fish and Wildlife Service suggests as a a a distance um that needs to be adhered to, and that was six hundred and sixty feet. Um, the proposed distance here far exceeds that. Um, and so we feel that we've done our due diligence and attempting effort in the direction of the trail uh to keep lights from shining, um, should that be an issue, um, away from the Eagle's Nest. Um, the buffer addresses where the hunting program, the waterfowl hunting can still exist in their zones. And then this pathway can go in place with a temporary crossing across um the creek area um that would be installed. So we would be looking if the board was agreeable to accept um the proposed pathway here. Uh, we had the motion and uh on the agenda, which will be taken uh on next Tuesday night if the board agrees after discussion to uh accept the proposed snowmobile trail alignment. Um, it's identified that's on this sheet here that's in front of you in the report packets. Um, anything else, John, Amy?
Quick question there. So we're looking at proposal three, which is the black on the map, correct?
Correct.
Any other uh questions, comments? I want to thank the staff for the work that they did on this. Reflection of um trying to take the the best available knowledge and translate it into an action plan and be responsive to our constituents. Okay, if there's no further discussion about that, um, then we'll go on to six point two. Review of regular meeting agenda items for uh meeting next week. Um, I think the board members have had a chance, you know, to look at the packet. Um, there's, you know.
One question on the fuel tracking that we're gonna explain that a little bit better if I were going, don't want to do that or?
No, we're proceeding. So we had requested, um, and John, you can probably tell the story better than me of of what occurred here. So last month, we asked to go to bid. Um, and so one of the pricing that they had received um was close to the bid amount and when they were doing their scoping. And then they got the other proposals that were greater. And then we found that the cost that was the lower cost is under the bid requirement threshold. So in essence, we can purchase it directly without having to go to bid, save staff time and resources of promotion and get the program that we want. So basically we were sending because that sends a message to all that there's going to be a bid to 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 participate in, there's not. So we want to pull that back and then we'll just purchase directly.
Good. Well, at least we're we're progressing on bar. Yeah, less labor intensive and less money. That's a win. Win win for everybody. Yeah, great. Good to hear. That's been going on for a while now. Yeah. Glad to hear. Everyone across the finish line on that one.
Thinking of finishing lines, the Glacial Park demolition, that's also on the uh agenda. And both from, I think, the point of view of timing and also from the budgeting point of view, moving money from one account to another. Is there any discussion about any of that?
It seems like it every, it gets more expensive all the time, so you got to pull the trigger sometime.
Okay, just. And then um on the treasures report, the we finished our fiscal year at the end of March, our year-to-date revenue was uh ten percent above budget, almost eleven percent, which translates into a million dollars of of revenue. Much of that was from the farm lease program, the state personal property replacement tax and elevated or rising interest rates, which in this case helped our income. Year-to-date expenses were down about six percent, approximately six hundred and forty thousand dollars. So this uh translates into a increase in our total fund balance of From the end of twenty-two to the end of this full year twenty-three, from approximately seven million to seven million eight hundred thousand. Three million one hundred fifty-nine thousand of which resides in the camp fund. So I think. You know, we're not running a business. We don't show a profit. But as far as planning goes, I think it's always. Um nice to see the um, the budget projections. Sort of be on the conservative side and then it translates into a feeling that, well, we, you know, we have funds. Uh with which to uh carry out our mission. Uh it's not like we're a business and we return money to our shareholders with dividends and. Stock buybacks and things like that.
Nevertheless.
Nevertheless.
I saw that in the report that there's, you know, considerable amount of money in, in, in the banks and CDs and whatnot, which, which is a good thing. But I just wondered if there was, if we should give any consideration to some government IBONS. Um they're paying six point seven percent right now. The last year, they, it's a year ago, they were nine percent. So that, you know, they're, they're above market, they're safe.
Is there any restriction there on an agency buying them or? Or do you have to be an individual?
I don't need the IBONS available to the public sector and there's.
And there's smaller amounts.
You take a ten thousand dollar.
Yeah, that's not worth that.
It's a great rate. Um and then I think it resets every six months to go higher.
It's unlimited for individuals. I didn't realize it was limited.
I think it's a, um.
Ten thousand.
Yeah, I think it's a year. So each year you can make a ten thousand dollar investment. Do you know for sure that's?
Yeah, I do for that.
I looked at it a few months ago because somebody recommended to me and I saw the same limitations. Maybe there's some other alternative.
Yeah, we can talk after.
Well, Andy, maybe you can, you and Lloyd talk and then get back to us sort of uh, 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 next Tuesday if, if you can.
Yeah, I mean, I look at the treasuries all the time, almost regularly. Most of the time the treasuries. Are five to ten basis points less on, on that three month to three year insurance. Sometimes it's a little more of a. But we're all, you know, that uh competitive CD market has been involved in treasury movement, uh government bias.
Good, all right. Well, thank you. And I thank everyone. For getting us uh through the budget process and. As I get ready to leave, you know, the baton will be passed and you all will continue to do a great job. Okay. So we talked about the agenda for next week. There are no major problems with that. Now we're gonna speak. About the pilot program for involving veterans and hunting opportunities, specifically disabled uh veterans. Officer, Officer Dan Lees Ward. And I hope I didn't mess up your last name too, David.
That's all right. I recognize you.
Well, tell me, what's the appropriate pronunciations?
Just pronounce Savior.
Savior.
Yeah, don't look at it.
Excellent practice, Savior.
Savior. Yes. It's just like if it did.
But we appreciate your uh and liking us and.
Call Dan. Yeah.
Well, um we, we brought forth uh in the board summary a very good description of what we're looking to do with this pilot program. Um it's uh involving veterans and giving them playing opportunities uh that perhaps otherwise wouldn't have. Uh the district has, has a, a very successful hunting program, not looking to tax that in a way. Uh to have this run as a separate uh small pilot program to investigate whether or not we have some interest, how much interest it is. Um and have it run congruent to the system, hunting system that we have now. So it's not going to take away uh. Uh any uh in hunting spots and. Same number of people are gonna be able to, to participate in the program as they have in years past. Uh this is just adding something additional to it. So. Actually, the credit needs to go to Sergeant Stewart and Officer Reddick, uh who unfortunately are not here. You know, one of them could be available uh this evening, so I'm filling in for them. Uh but they did a great deal of work uh with this and one of the biggest things that they're trying to accomplish was to uh. Number one, find a five oh one C charitable organization one that's not wanting profit uh in any way uh from this program at all. Uh and they did. Uh they found one. It's a nationwide program called uh Fallen Outdoors. Just a little background about it. It started. Uh nineteen ninety with uh three servicemen in Afghanistan and now it's grown uh to service uh tens of thousands of veterans. Uh giving them outdoor opportunities that they otherwise wouldn't have. And each of those opportunities is at no cost for the veterans as well. We've all heard the statistics and if you haven't, it's uh on average point two servicemen use their life every day. Not to say that giving them an opportunity would make a, a huge difference in that number.
That's suicide.
But if it's one, it's one.
What type of disabilities wo- will we be accommodating and? In other words, from the point of view of safety and. Just effectiveness, is everyone gonna be accompanied by someone without a specific disability or? You can just.
Yes, yeah, the, you know, the idea behind it is uh, um is still evolving. Uh we have to see, you know, what kind of availability do we have uh as far as the site goes? Uh and can we effectively and safely uh have hunters use that area uh that have a disability? Disabilities come in a wide range uh from one spectrum to another. Uh and obviously at this time, I don't think we have any sites that can accommodate some of the most severe disabilities that there are. But we can many others. Um each of uh, if you go through the couple slides here. Um each of them will have to go through a mandatory hunter safety orientation, just like every other hunter in our, our program will. There'll be no difference other than the fact that uh it would be one site that would be set aside and just for a couple of weekends. Uh I know that the, the slides that were presented are prepared by Sergeant Stewart. Uh talked about a deer hunting, mentor deer hunting program. This year we're just looking at waterfowl. We're looking at two weekends at one site. Um mentored either by somebody from the group uh or somebody from the police department uh to meet with them as well. Uh but they, anybody who participates is gonna have to go through the mandatory hunter safety orientation, just as everybody else is. All the same rules apply uh as to the uh very safe program that we implemented years here. Uh this is just giving another uh demographic opportunity that otherwise wouldn't. And instead of us going out and seeking, uh we're going to partner with Fallen Outdoors. Uh who will then uh bring forth candidates that they feel uh after their vetting uh would be most appropriate to. They want to succeed as well. They don't want to have a failure anyway or have a barrier with us.
Well, I think it's a wonderful idea and uh. Appreciate your input and your colleagues and the staff. And you know, at some point in the future, you know, report back to us. It may take a season or two and you get a sense of. Uh you know, what's been accomplished and it can be improved or enhanced in, in any way, but uh I think we all owe that to. You know, people who serve and uh. Certainly a rational uh use of district resources, I think.
Thank you.
Any more, any questions for Officer McMoore? Thank you.
Thank you.
Elizabeth.
Right, let me just check here on the. It looks like we're getting some sunshine now too.
Yeah, but the rain is pouring on the shingles right there and there's no rain there.
All right, uh well, uh we don't have um. Justin Gate is not here this evening, but as everyone knows, we want to congratulate him on the birth of the twins, um Lennox and Lila, which are our conservation family, our future conservationists that uh. And they hit close to home as we heard today for future generations that are up and coming. Some of these places are preserved and protected so they can get outdoors and enjoy it. Um I do want to talk a little bit about um another action that I will be bringing forward and want the board to consider, uh which we talked about back in October. Was the DUCNL Committees on Local Government Efficiency Act that we have to comply with. And so I just have a few slides. To update everybody and so everybody can be reminded of what we are going to need to be doing. And what is going to be required so we can come into compliance. Um this was an act that was signed up by the governor. It relates to any districts, special districts um that are a taxing body. And so this would mean the district would undergo this process. That you need um as we discussed in the committee uh no later than June tenth of this year. And then I'll talk a little bit about what I am proposing that we do. Um that committee is the Board of Trustees, the Executive Director, and then uh two official members. Uh from the community or others that we feel that would help us uh work through the process. The requirement is that we meet at the minimum um at least uh three times. We have to meet three times. You have your. Uh uh your preliminary uh meeting and uh kind of organizational meeting and then your final meeting will be to adopt a written plan. Um that then is filed and submitted to the county. And that has to be done within eighteen months from the end of your virtual organizational meeting. Um and during the meetings, because it's the Board of Trustees and because of the process is open transparency. Is if these meetings are held um as a public meeting, we post, um they can be included as part of our regular meeting. We just have to have on the agenda the specific of the conversation uh for that, or they can be posted separately, but they have to be posted. There will be minutes um and uh all other things having a forum present for the meeting to consider it is, is required for that. Um there is no rulebook or guideline um on exactly what to look at, but the purpose is to take a look. At efficiencies um and any recommendations. And I think the district is in a very good position. Actually, McHenry County is in excellent position. You know, through the work, um there was a sort of down the intergovernmental uh collaboration group that was started with the county and it was a sample. Chip was CMAP. Now they hired Shaylan Bagel to kind of assist with our intergovernmental collaboration. And there's an administrators group that we meet regularly. We talk about shared services and items and areas that, that we do in the district. Has a great history of, of that type of work. So I think the process can be very, I think a lot of it has been done, but it's just a matter of looking through um, you know, for the, for the whole process here. Um so the suggested timeline uh in talking with President Cook here would be that we have our organizational meeting on May twenty-third. That's our regular board meeting next month. Um and we include that either as part of the agenda or we do it at seven o'clock. Usually our meeting's pretty quickly done at the regular meeting. We took most of our time out. Um we call the meeting and um and at that point we'll discuss all the logistics, kind of the assignments that we want to give out, what we want to look at, what we want to do. And then potentially schedule, uh I'm thinking once assignments are given out, maybe we need to get in the fall just to check in, how are we doing? And then start a draft report and then finalize it in the spring. We have eighteen months. But I think the timing would uh move us to move this along quicker than that. So we're not up until October. I'd like to get it done. And uh with the next season cycle, because we don't have a lot of other activities that, that we're working on. So that's kind of uh the timeline that I would propose uh for the board to consider. Um any questions?
Well, I think we should think of Sean and Ray.
Well, it's, it's not, it's not good.
Everybody.
Everybody. Nobody gets.
Well, we're only trying to have a baby to decide about more meetings. I'm a little confused about the efficiency of that. Yeah, yeah, okay. I'm, I'm trying to wrap my head around it, that's all.
Yeah, and, and so again, speaking with other forest preserves and conservation districts and IEPD, and I'm sure down at the legislative parks state will be talking a little bit because this is obviously a timeline. Howard Vando's first. I've already spoken um the feed and, and again, this was submitted kind of layout, whatever we're using, but there are other like-minded pieces in that. So.
I'm sure you'll crack the whip then we will.
We'll jump, we'll follow the ways.
So um so that's on that. That's up and coming. Earth Day this weekend at Prairie View Education Center. So I hope that you'll come on by twelve to four o'clock. Um sponsored this with the environmental defenders in McHenry County. Usually is a good showing. There's lots of activities. And uh there's heights and it's going to represent our first hike, uh our hike with Mike, Bueller's Day Outside Series that we're starting. And uh following Earth Day, that'll be a monthly program. Uh we're doing to start off for this upcoming year. So that'll be followed in May, June. Uh we'll skip July, August, and September. So I think I shared with you, I'm looking for board members and others that would like to join. I will be out there on the heights, but it's a great opportunity to connect also with um our patrons that are out on the sites and, and we're gonna try to use the time to educate. And, and showcase and uh and really appreciate uh Chairman Bueller's enthusiasm. Uh for the outdoors. He spoke very highly during our conservation congress. And he's continued, actually, I know for the first day of the new year, every year he adds some things and like that's his commitment. And he does a lot of work there. So I'm looking forward to that program.
It was, but maybe Christie can send a sign up or a reminder to the Board of Trustees and some of them people can look at their calendars and. Yeah, Trump and that's our.
That would be great. And we're hopeful to get county board members to join us for the hikes and to come out. And then we are going to do our meeting rate with the county board um on June sixteenth over at Pleasant Valley.
Yeah, truly looking forward to that.
Yes.
They asked me where it was and I didn't really kind of, I made something up and they go, oh no. He'd sell you out right straight.
I didn't work so well last time we tried to look there.
That will be as elusive.
So funny.
Very exciting.
So that'll be fun. We look forward just to the conversation and being able to that opportunity to get everybody outdoors. And I just wanted to update you on a few other things with our local municipalities. Uh with the village of Richmond, I had shared with you, we were having some potential issues with our internet for Lost Valley because of our service provider who uses their water tower. That's been rectified. They will be able to stay up. So the internet service will not be lost for us. So we do appreciate um village of Richmond responding proactively and assisting us with that. Um village of Greenwood, um I did share some information. They've requested some assistance. Um they are a small municipality. They are not a tax-supported municipality. They have got, they got, they have proved to assemble as a unit of government, but they had no passage of a taxing authority. So um they have a responsibility to take care of a road or a bridge down there. President Ferris is going to join and come attend next meeting. Um I've exchanged a lot of correspondence back and forth. Um initially it started looking to see if we could help support. Again, the match. Um as I said, we definitely, we, we have our own deferred maintenance of bridges to take care of, et cetera, but I understand. Um their situation. Um the, they're looking. Um then there was a question about the. D annexing the district's property. Would we be agreeable to, and I was trying to figure that from a tool, how did that work? To if they wanted or they, they don't want to give up the road. I mean, if they want to maintain the road and the bridge, they don't want to have to give it up. If they don't have the dollars to, to take care of it, then they may need to look at transferring that to the county or the township to you. So. But um in speaking just in general with legal and um. I mean, it just, we, we don't need to have, where we sit, it's not a requirement for them to do what they need to do. So it really doesn't involve us from that perspective. Um but they are still looking at creative ways and uh. The last thing that they presented was the potential with the district who interested in a, he was on Ed's presentation. Uh a way for wildlife and the bridges that are there, since we are on the one side of Clean Hand and then we have a conservation design on the other side. Um would it score or meet or grant application for a wildlife processing as part of that? And um and so that's still to be explored and that would be the discussion, but. But we'll hear what Ferris has to say next week. Um he brings drainage district um sharing uh, we met with them and uh President, uh Vice President them and us earlier on. To talk about the MOU, uh the district has taken action to put one of the things that came up during that meeting. Was the water control structure, which was one of the key issues of concern. Um the district has installed five gauges down there and um we're looking and bringing back a proposal to the board. Doesn't require a board approval, but we wanted to see both in transparency of the class and it's not budgeted for us to. We have found a solution that we feel will do an excellent job um electronically and monitoring without staff time and resources to go down and do that. So we'll be presenting that to the board. And then hopefully we can work on getting the MOU in place. And then hopefully we can work on getting the MOU in place for later on. Excuse me. Lions Spring Marsh Stakeholder Open House. And so we'll send information out on this and we will be sending out a press release on our website. But May fourth from five to seven, ranking. And that will be at the Lost Valley Visitor Center, and they're also looking at a virtual meeting platform as well. So. Whether you're in person or virtually for that open house and we'll be looking forward to getting public input. So they're apprised of what the board was throwing and shared and give you that on the project. And then a Godwin Township, the district addressed, there was an issue down by the house conservation area where a culvert was blocked. And during the scoping of kind of whose ownership of this area, the house, it's not in the main quarter or right. But it's to the outside. It's still just a property. But there, we took care of the culvert issue, but then it was. Identified that there were material that was in a wetland that was not placed there by the district. Obviously, that's kind of going into what was causing some of the. Blocking of the culvert and there's some industrial area, right, that's strapping or potentially. There's material there. So there's a notice of violation of material in the wetland. We'll continue to work through that. And work to get that resolved. So I want to make the board aware of that. And then Governor H, Governor, Governor, Gov HR has done the work for the compensation classification study. And currently, staff are going through their job analysis pieces. So that's continually to be worked on. And then they'll go back to Gov HR and then we'll do their work. And if there's any other updates, next week we will be honoring, as you saw on the consent agenda. Our Conservation Champion and Legacy Award winners. And so I know for Barb Wilson, her daughter will be, she's out of the country, but is going to try to stream. On here through Zoom and of course, Brad Semel will be here and will report that and both of them. For their effort and then we'll also recognize she, in this Friday, will be sworn in at the County Police Associations. As the first female in that role. So we congratulate her and thank you to those that. Provided your support. And the golf outing, we talked a little bit about. We do have a pre-son. We need one more. We'd love to get a trustee to join us for golf. I don't golf either. Birds and the bees, but, but. But we'd love to have one more and. And then I'll be in Springfield next week for National McHenry County Board of Dimensional Bureau of Warzone. And then a week following the park stay as well. So that is my report.
Well, thanks very much. Question for Elizabeth. Okay, John, thank you. Next on our agenda then are public comments. Public either here in the audience or out there virtually. If not, I think we'll take your motion to go into executive session. Will we convene after executive session? But there really will be no business other than a roll.
I'll make that motion to go to executive session. Two C personnel, two C eleven, probable litigation and two C two twenty-one review of those. Session minutes of the Open Meetings Act five LLC S one twenty-one. Vice President.
Yes.
Secretary Thomas. Rusty Everard.
Yes.
President Chris.
Yes.
Yeah. Motion to adjourn.
We have to have a roll call.
Oh, a roll call. Thank you. Chris, you're. I know, very good.
President Cook.
Still here.
Thank you, Thomas. Yeah, yes, here. And Rusty Everard.
Okay, motion to adjourn to fix the time to which the board shows. Tuesday, April twenty fifth.
We don't need that. We, I'm sorry, that's my fault. You should adjourn. If we have this to carry over, you could carry it over.
Okay, we're not carrying over.
I'm just going with the motion.
Make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Yes.
Vice President.
Yes.
Secretary Thomas. Yeah. President Chris.
Yeah.
President Cook. It's not raining.